We don't do that here and they said they didn't do it here and we didn't, I didn't do that in the other place. We're gonna do our darnedest to be fiduciary to our residents and spend only what we need. And luckily, this year, we were able to lower the rate. I wish we could lower, recommend a better, even lower rate. But as I stated last time, and I should mention this again, if you're homesteaded, you can, your taxable value can only go up 3%. And your mil, our military rate basically went down 3%, so you'll see no tax increase. So for the many, many people that are homesteaded, you, you won't see a tax increase from the town of Lake Clark Shores. So.
Can you repeat that again?
Sure.
That's important. That's good news, I think.
Yes, sure. Okay, if there's the thing called Save Your Homes, so it's very powerful over the years. If, again, if you see your trim notice or your tax bill, if you, if you can't understand all the parts of it, because it's very hard to understand, you need calculus too. Come on in and I'll explain it to you, but basically there is a state statute up there that says your taxable value, and that's what you pay taxes up, is a fair market value, but you're, you're pretty much your house or your property value is worth. Or, and then there's a taxable value that's under that. So your taxable value can only go up 3% a year. This market value can go up 10%, 20%, or go up nothing. But this can only go up with the cost of living. And believe it or not, the cap of 3% over the 20 years of Save Your Homes only gone into effect two or three times. So most of the times it's 1.6 or 2%, 2%. So your taxes really can't go up a lot. That's why you're, you're, you hear about people that own their houses and they're stuck in their houses because their, their, their property taxes are $3,000 or $2,000. But if they sell their house and a new person comes into their house and they're from over, they're from up north, their, their taxes are 10,000 or 12,000 because of that Save Your Homes is very powerful. But I don't want you to move, your Save Your Homes is portable. So you can, if you buy a house within the state of Florida, it, within three years, you can port that savings from your fair market value to your taxable value. So again, it's a little calculus, but the big thing, again, if you're homesteaded, since we reduced our rate by 3%, almost, it was like 2.86, and we, you, you did have a 3% increase in your taxable value, you're not gonna see a tax increase from the town of Lake Clark Shores.
Anything else, Mr. Getholz?
I'm just happy we're not pulling from reserves. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment about, I'm, I think this is the only time since I've been on the council had a rollback. You know, so I'm really impressed with that. And I'm also impressed with the fact that we were able to do that despite the fact the waste management increased by 3%. And I just want to remind the audience, we were one of the few towns in Palm Beach County that covers your garbage. There are a lot of towns that charge you a lot of money for garbage, like Palm Beach. So think about that. Part of this budget, a part of this process, if you get in this of waste management coming to your property three times a week, you know, for, once for foliage and then twice for, you know, regular garbage. So I'm impressed that we were able to keep this this way. That's all I have.
Tell us what the fund balances, Mr. Mr. Labello, if you have that, Andy.
1.3 million. But I'll, I'll expand that a little bit on the waste management if I can. We, we're paying about $18 a month for waste services. And it's, it's 30 or 40 dollars everywhere else. So this council was fortunate enough to secure a contract for several years, a seven-year contract, I believe. And it was very smart because, again, with hyperinflation, labor costs and everything else. And if, thank you, with the diesel costs and fuel, a lot of the waste management, a lot of the trucks would go into propane, natural gas because of fuel. But anyway, the, the contracts are going up 50 to 100%. So this council was smart enough to get a long, long-term contract.
We lobbied a lot, right, Bob?
We did good.
Bob lobbied a lot.
We did good. Emily? Do we have any emails online?
No.
Any audience comments? Mr. Daughtry.
Daughtry, 1410 Keller Road. So thanks for the rollback, a certain amount. But I'll go back and back and back again and again and again. We're 1,400 houses, okay? We're a small town. We're less than a square mile. 32% of our residents are single people in the houses over 65. And we're proposing a budget increase of 16%. But we're only rolling back 2.86%, okay? I think we can do better. I think we can do, you know, better. Anything would be better, especially for single people over 65 living in their houses by, by themselves, okay? They need help. They need help. Taxes, why not? Not just taxes, but insurance costs are going through the roof, okay? And they need help. They need help anywhere they can, okay? So there's three parts to this. I think we need to do something with vehicles that we lease and or own in this town. I think we can cut back there. Having a bunch of Tahos and a suburban, your suburban, going up and down through our town, less than a square mile, I don't think is an efficient use of our money. We should go to smaller vehicles or alternative fuel vehicles. I think that's something we need to look at. Staffing. We don't need to fill any open positions right now, okay? Or create new positions. Okay, we've been advertising for an assistant finance manager. We've hot, we've contracted with a town engineer. We've hired a full-time code enforcement officer. And we're talking about getting a magistrate to handle our code enforcement cases. That's additional cost. Those are additional costs. Those are additional costs. We don't need to do that. We need to look at what we're spending our money on, okay? I would like a lot more specificity in the budget. I would like, if we're having major projects going, that we get accounting on them as they're completed, so we can see where our money is being spent. Such as the wall on Florida Mango Road, the pickleball courts in the North Park. And of course, we're gonna have our, one of our biggest one, which is going to be the Bridge on Pine Tree. I would love to see those numbers. To see where we're spending our money, to make sure we're doing it efficiently and at the best price possible. Here's something that really bugs me. We have spent a lot of money on engineering for the sewer converter. And we, we spent a lot today, and we're proposing to spend a lot more. When will this engineering be complete? And what is that cost to us, okay? I would love to see that. I really would love to see that. It's, it's been going on a long time and we've never seen any final plans on that. And I'm, I'm just wondering about it. And we have entered in a, to a contract for a town engineer. I've looked at the budget and we have any number of engineers working for our town. And what we're spending for engineering seems kind of hot. And I would like to know, with our new town engineer, if this was put out to be competitively bid, did we get three bids on this? I, I know it's Dan and everything else, and I know Dan's a good engineer, and I know he's giving us a very good rate on it. But we need to make sure that when we're bidding and we're spending money, we gotta get three bids and get competitive bids. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Any other audience comments? Come on, Fran. Ms. Carlton.
Fran Carlton, 8432 Waterway Drive. I just have a question because, Mr. Labello, when you were talking to us, you said some minor changes were made here and there in the budget. Could we maybe know where those were? Since we don't have time to go through the whole budget compared to the last budget we saw.
Sure.
I mean, when I was on the council, I know that happened too, but it's nice for the residents to know where those changes were.
You want to address that now? You want to address it under council comments?
I can do it now.
Do it now.
Okay. One was when I met with one of the council members, they wanted to separate the septic to sewer in the professional, in the, oh, okay. I'm sorry. There's not many, so, that I recall. It's under page. 24. I added the line. Again, there was no change in numbers here, but instead of all lumped under professional services, for more transparency, I added professional services and divided it under, in two categories, professional services and professional services are septic to sewer, design of phase three to five. Same amount of money, but more transparency. The other thing was the pension. We use the word pension in the budget, and there's really, we don't have a pension, per se. So we, we just called it retirement contribution. Yes, well, it's, that one's throughout every department.
All right.
I think it said pension, right? Pension.
Pretty sure it did.
Yeah.
All right. And clerk, please read the resolution. Hearing nothing further from council or the audience. Mary?
Resolution 2023-30, adoption of the 2023-2024 mileage rate. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, setting and fixing a military for fiscal year 2023-24 at 6.1000 mils.
Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, read the next resolution, please.
Resolution 2023-31, adoption of 2023-2024 budget. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So move, pass unanimously. The chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-31.
So moved.
Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. The approval of the five-year capital improvement element.
So moved.
Chair will entertain a motion, second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Is there anything else that we need to address in the budget meeting?
No, that concludes the budget.
That being said, chair will entertain a motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Going to the big book.
I now call to order the regular town council meeting, Town of Lake Clark Shores, September 27th, 2023. Roll call, please. Bless you.
Bless you. God bless you.
Mayor Gregory Fiebold, Vice Mayor Robert Shawhoop.
Here.
President Proton Valtien Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember John Maples.
Here.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no presentations, there are no quasi judicial, there is no public hearing. The, but I would like to take a little, what they say. License, is it?
Creative license?
Creative license, or whatever they say. We had a, we had a cleanup the lake this past weekend, and I received a phone call about seven o'clock, and my grandson called me up and he said, "We going?" I said, "Absolutely, we're going." "You picking me up?" I said, "Absolutely, I'm picking you up." So I decided to get out of bed and so I went by and picked him up, stopped by here and made sure everything was going good. And the staff, staff just did an absolutely great job in making sure that the town boat ramp was all cleaned up. I want to give special thanks to the utility. And, and the, the utility crew just did a great job making sure it was safe and sound for all of us. And then the staff itself was, y'all did just a great job in, in making sure that everything was in proper order. So when everybody came up to register, boom, bada bam, bada beam, it was just, it was just, just a sight to behold. So if I may, please, the Jimmy Castranakis won a, the biggest item, it was a kitchen sink. And Marty and Ken Barker won for the most unusual item. It was a plastic goose. I thought that was very interesting. And then we should notice that there were a total of 420 pounds of garbage taken out of the lake. Also want to honorable mention, we go to Bill Murphy, who retrieved a 55-inch plasma TV screen.
Didn't work.
Pardon me?
Did not work.
But I do want you to know, if I may, there was a special, a special resident, his name is Jacob Seal. Come on up, Jacob. So everybody knows that he's my favorite grandson.
Yeah.
So the 400 and some odd pounds of stuff pulled out of the, of the, the, the lake, Jacob had 306 pounds.
Wow.
One of the most unique items that we picked up, in particular, we saw this, and I want to thank the chief and and the police officer, because Jacob and I around, and we started picking up everything. And it was a Lake Clark Shores, you know, a trespassing sign that had a wall of concrete in the bottom. It was up against the, I couldn't believe it. The phone number, Palm Springs. So on behalf of the entire town council, Mr. Jacob Seal, we present you with this certificate of the most items found, and a gift certificate, suppose. Excuse me. As they say, he threw me a little shade. I think that's the new term. Because he was the one that jumped out of the boat and jumped into the water. I would not get in that down in water. And it pulled everything up, and we had some help from Jimmy Castranakis. So I mean to tell you, I had to go make sure he got a big. So I mean, to tell you, I had to go make sure he got a big disinfectant, sprayed him down with Lysol afterwards. Nasty place. But again, everybody that showed up, thank you so very, very much. And again, three hundred and six point nine point nine pounds, so.
Thanks for everybody's help. And can I add something?
Sure can.
I want to thank Southwater Management because I called them just two days before. Bill, Bill asked me to call them. Thanks, Bill, for reminding us. And they lowered the lake about a couple of feet. And what that does is allows us to see all the debris in the water. I think it's already back up. So that, so they
There's a lot of rain.
We'll, we'll send them a thank you letter, but we appreciate them taking that water out so we can see all the debris in the water and thanking everybody because they did a great job.
I tell you what, a bunch of good neighbors we have here. Unfinished business, approval of a utility easement. Mr., Mr. Lobello, why don't you teach us what this is all about? Questions for me.
I'll try. Back in June of last year, the council approved at a five-o vote a, to the higher grounds education, a Montessori school at five, fifteen oh one Forest Hill Boulevard. This is in, during their planning of, of this project, they discovered they need a new water line for water suppression, for a new water suppression system that's needed for a new building, which is these sprinklers, basically. So that has to be a dedicated line. It cannot be added onto the line that you drank water out of. So they, they're having problems getting that line because it's a condo built, there are three condo buildings there that they don't have an easement or any kind of way to get that line, they believe, to their building. So the applicant is here on the phone, I believe, if, if they want to make a mention to anything. But obviously, we as the town, the town attorney and I take easements very seriously. So we want to mitigate any effects that, that has as much as possible because easements are forever. That, that this is not something that's temporary or has a term. So what we came up with, what the applicant is asking for, and that's what they, that's my job, is when an applicant asks for something, I bring it to council and see if they would like to do this. The, the applicant believes they can't open the school unless they get the easement. So they're going to go right across community park, right across the line of their, of the property line, which the town owes, ten feet wide by a hundred and eighty-five feet. And they're going to bring a line through the park. They're going to directional bore the line, which means they are not going to hopefully disturb any of the trees and anything above ground. And of course, our town attorney is going to make the easement as town friendly as possible to make sure that this is not disruptive in the future. But if an easement is near the property line, it usually doesn't affect the property value as much because you can't say, well, it's a park, it'll never be developed. You can't say that. You can't say forever because this is forever. And this, well, this line will be paramount in, in its use forever. So we take this very seriously. Charlie, did I leave anything?
Just, just a couple of things.
Okay.
Typically, I do not recommend granting easements in public property. I recommend a license and a permit. An easement can be granted, but you need to understand that when the easement is granted, the easement purpose becomes the paramount estate and the paramount purpose. And the underlying fee becomes the subservient estate. And you can do nothing to impair the rights of the easement holder. In this case, they don't need an easement on the surface or in the airspace. So my recommendation would be that the easement be rewritten such that it does not contain language in, on, over, and across, but it says under. Additionally, the easement is not to the Montessori school, it's to the property owner of the office building. It's in perpetuity. What happens when the Montessori school is gone? Will the water line still be needed? Possibly. What happens fifty years from now when the building gets torn down? Will they still need the water line? They still are going to have an easement and you're not going to be able to do anything to stop that easement unless the property owner agrees to abandon and vacate and extinguish the easement.
Let me stop you. Would that be a contingent? A contingency?
It, it, it can be. And, and I would recommend putting it, putting it in. The agreement that we were provided is, I mean, the easement we were provided is a standard easement. I can tell you, it's almost identical to every easement that the county recommends. But it doesn't protect the town for the use of the property as a park. My recommendation would be that it's, it was going to be fifteen feet. I suggested if they're directional boring, they could reduce it to ten. But if there's landscaping on that easement, I think we need to provide that the landscaping will stay and that if it has to be removed in order to repair or replace, that it's not our responsibility to remove it, but the easement holder's responsibility. You also need to address the issue of it's at the edge of the park. Are you going to put in a fence or a wall? If you do, it's going to be on that easement or it's going to be ten feet inside of that easement. I think you need to preserve the right to use the surface and the airspace for park purposes and those park purposes are paramount. And the easement for the water line is only the surface so many feet below or so many inches below the surface. And the document does provide for a minimum depth.
Let's go back to your first statement. Mr. Shek, where you indicate you usual, you don't like easements, you prefer licenses.
Yeah, I wouldn't say I don't like them. It's just that they're forever and, and you have no control over
Then let's dovetail into the conversation. Why not a license?
It, let me just make one other comment
Go right ahead.
About the easement and then we'll talk about the license. This light easement does not say it's non-exclusive. It needs to be non-exclusive because you may need to use some of that property to the extent it doesn't impair their rights for another purpose. So we want to put non-exclusive in there. I have in the past recommended license and permits. It's going to have to be an irrevocable license. But just as we can put language in the easement, in the, in the easement, we can put language in the permit and license that says if the water line is no longer needed, the, the license expires or the easement will be vacated.
Now, first question that came up to my mind when we discussed this with Mr. Lobello, why do they need this water line there? What's wrong with the water that is supplied to the, the property at this time?
My understanding is the water that's supplied to the property is the potable water and it, this has to be a separate dedicated line for fire suppression. And I believe that we can draft this artfully to protect the rights of the town to continue to use the surface and airspace for park and recreation purposes and allow the owner of the office building to use the underlying space for the water line. And it should be specifically and exclusively, even though it's a non-exclusive easement, their easement is only for the water line and for no other utility.
Anybody have any comments that
Can I?
Agree with the, the direction that Mr. Shek wants to go?
Can I add one little thing to that? Just wanted to add that in the motion, it's protected that I, I put in there that it's the town's, town attorney's review and approval. So that means I'm not signing anything. I'm not recommending until he's, the town attorney's fine with all the language in there. If not, we'll bring it back. So, so just to make sure, as we're a total agreement, we, we, we take this very serious. So we're going to do whatever we can to protect the town.
And in order to expedite this, I think it would probably be easier if I, prior to our next council meeting, which is in, what, three weeks? Or two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
October ten.
That I prepare the edits and send them to the, the property owner rather than asking them to prepare the edits.
I don't want them to prepare it. I don't want them to
I, I got a question about permanent licensing, licensing. Who does that run to?
It, it will, it will again be to the underlying property owner of the office building.
Isn't that a little bit safer because we can withdraw the permit? If, if
Well, it's going to, in order to accomplish what they need, it's going to have to be an irrevocable permit. But we can put language in there that if the building is demolished, if and when it is, and if it's no longer, the fire suppression is no longer needed, the license expires. But we can put similar language in the easement also.
Well, I, I might concern is the school's been around talking about being developed for over a year. And I just, you know, what if, what if we, we go into this agreement, they decide to not going to put a school in or they decide to use that to their benefit and sell it to someone else for some other purpose, saying, hey, look, we've got this easement or we got this permit.
Restricted.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not for the easement as it's written and I prefer a permit. But that's just my opinion.
So go ahead.
Vice Mayor, we
Go right ahead.
Discussion. Thank you. Um, my, one of my biggest concerns, I know we've got this traffic study that the town has implemented and we're trying to get completed. And on Forest Hill, there's already, you know, it gets pretty wild during rush hour and then throwing a school there, it's going to be even more chaotic. And then we still got Pine Tree Bridge that's going to be on the docket here soon and that's going to create a backlog of traffic as well in the future.
Yeah.
Is this, do we want to, is that the direction the town wants for that Forest Hill Boulevard? For that CR and everything we're working on there? Do we really want that there? Do we want it now? Has the, and maybe Joe, this is a question for you. Has the, the traffic study that we've got that we're working on, does that include the school being on Forest Hill Boulevard?
It, it does not. It's, it's based on existing conditions. The, the thing that worries me with that conversation, the site plan has been approved with the, so really, we can't go back and, right?
Yeah, correct. We've already granted them the ability to have the school.
So
We being the town.
But you can vote against the easement and they can find another way to, if they can. But that would be up to you to do.
I wonder if there is, is there a plan B?
There's always a plan B. That, that's a great question. You can buy the building next to you. You, you can, you know, you can buy the whole shopping center because that's, you know, there's, plan Bs always take more money. So there's always a plan B and you can reject it and say, we don't, we don't love easements. But this is something that does happen. And as, as the town attorney says, I think he, he can make it as less intrusive as possible, but it's very serious. I mean, it's your, the easements, that's why I even put in there monetary considerations. People sell easements. I mean, it's not for free. So this is something you guys have to decide on. Do you want to accommodate the applicant or not with this request?
And I think the one thing you have to consider is that with the water line being underground, you're going to have minimal impact. The only time there's going to be an issue is if they have to come in and maintain or repair the line and then
That's their, make sure that that's their job, that, that's their response.
And, and then we have to put in that the property will be restored to the condition it was in prior to those repairs.
I don't know whether, I'm going to give you an opportunity, Mr. Gonzalez, to, to jump in on this, but I, I don't know whether or not it's an issue we, we thumbs up or thumbs down with regard to the easement now or we wait and, until Mr. Shek has an opportunity to discuss with the property owner, option A and option B, and then come back. Because I, I think that needs to be vetted a little bit better than right now. But I, I yield to you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Shack, I think, I think you had a very comprehensive analysis. It gives us a lot of insight into what's going on and I appreciate
I deal with easements every week. Because of all the water control districts I represent in the Glades, most of their drainage rights are easements.
Well, you, you got, I mean, you hit everything. You hit the, the majority of my questions. I, I think it's important to restrict it to, to underground. I think it's important to take your advice to move forward with the license. And again, I just want to elaborate a little bit more because this is our only time to, to sit and chat about this. The applicant, is that the Montessori applicant or is that the building owner that is on the phone here with us this evening? If at all.
Is anybody on the line?
Yes, Matt is on the line. Matt, you can go ahead.
Yeah, hello everyone. Thanks. My name is Matt from Higher Ground Education. Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, we can hear you.
Identify yourself, please.
Perfect.
At who?
Sorry, say it again.
Last name, Matt.
You have a last name, sir?
Oh, yeah. Last name is Knuf, K-N-O-P-F, with Higher Ground Education. I think, so we're the, the operator of the school that's proposed for that location. And I think in the audience, yeah, in the audience is Vivek Redding, who is the property owner.
We have council representation for the, the property owner. Okay. Hi, doctor. How are you? Oh, okay. All right, so that, that answered my question. And, and thank you both for, for being here this evening. I just wanted to make a mention, we have some friends up on the north end, Palm Beach Gardens, and I believe it's a guidepost. Montessori? Matt?
That is correct. Yep, guidepost Montessori.
Our, our friends up on the north end, they absolutely love guideposts. They, it's, it's a wonderful curriculum. It's a wonderful team and staff that they have. And to be very frank and very transparent, I, I think that something like this would be extremely beneficial to our town in attracting and, and, you know, cultivating really good primary education for, for our kids. But with that being said, in order for that to happen, I want to make sure that, that we have everything put in place to deliver, you know, safety systems to, to these kids. And that's really what we're talking about this. I'm going to call it a license and a permit and switch over to that vocabulary instead of calling it an easement for now. And, you know, I want to be able to, to work. I, I would like for us to be able to work with them to make sure that, that that becomes a reality because the kid's safety really is of utmost importance. And I, and I do still think that it's an important facet to, to what we have to offer to our residents. With that being said, Mr. Shek touched a little bit upon underground. Is there any way that we can have limitations or certain depth guides? And you did bring up an important point because of the fencing and posting. And, and I know that those are probably built to two to three feet underground, so.
And right now, the minimum depth on the proposed utility easement is four feet.
Okay, so it would, it would start no higher than four feet deep.
And, and I believe that works.
Okay.
Let's present a code.
And, and okay. And, and then obviously the provision that you touched on, any type of ingress or egress on our property to be able to service any of those lines in the future. And I, I'm kicking this thing down the road forty, fifty years if, if, you know, hopefully the, the pipe lasts that long. But I, I would like to make sure that any of the landscaping that we put in, any of the amenities that we may have in the area, you know, it, it's all gets protected.
And a classic example of this is the Florida Power and Light Utility Easements along Road Rights of Way. If those utility easements aren't properly written and the county or state wants to widen the road, they have to pay to move the power lines, not FPNL. And I'm making the recommendation that if anything has to be moved, it's not the town's responsibility to move it, it's the property owners. In this case, because it's underground, it should not be a problem.
This is an issue that we had recently with the county and FPNL wanting to move the lines and it was hitting us with a several hundred thousand dollar expense. It was not anticipated. And then I think
You can anticipate what an easement will bring in the future.
And I think Dan negotiated a collaborative resolution with the county and the utility. So yes, I understand.
And, and I believe since this is four feet underground, you're going to have minimal impact on the park.
Okay.
But we just want to address the potential risks.
And speaking of potential risks, whether it's like tomorrow, a year down the road, whatever it is, a hundred years down the road. whatever it is, a hundred years down the road, what happens if there is some sort of eventuality where that system that we are now talking about, if one day it's obsolete, no longer utilized? Who is going to deal with that abandonment issue? Who is going to go and collect those pipes? Who, and we actually are seeing it now, because Florida State has mandated that we now inspect lead pipes for lead. So if now that becomes an issue, and hypothetically, those pipes are on our property, based on either an easement or a license, hopefully it's the property owner that is to bear the responsibility of testing, removal, and compliance. Correct. Okay.
Would you like to come on up and say hello tonight? I know that we briefly talked.
Pleasure to see some familiar faces and some new faces. I am the owner, but the person who, and the entity that would be putting in the water line would be the school itself, the operator. The way that the deal is put together is that KMR LLC will be transferring either the easement or however it is structured over to the new owner. The new owner would then work with the school to...
The new owner, for the record, your full name?
My name is Vivek Reddy.
And your address?
My, my address, my business address is 1501 Forest Hill Boulevard.
Now, when you say the new owner, that's not you?
No.
You're talking about the new owner of the school?
No. We are selling the property to a third entity, and the third entity is working with the school to...
The easement runs with the land, so that's...
Yeah, it runs with the land.
No problem.
That does not create a problem.
I just didn't know whether or not, you obviously hear our concerns. It's not necessarily today, but it's for tomorrow.
That's correct. We, we hear the concerns. And I've been, during the meeting, I've been communicating with the school. The school is generally favorable with what the town is suggesting, and is willing to review the language that comes from Mr. Shoup, and work with him on developing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Emily, anybody online?
No comments.
No comments. All right. Any questions on Mr. Reddy? Okay, thank you. All right. Bill? You may come on up, tell us who you are, Bill.
Bill Murphy, 1841 Evergreen Drive. I am aware that there is a water main that belongs to Palm Beach County on Carandis, and it's short of this property. So the property is now trying to come through the, the pipe is trying to come through the property, which is our park. Instead of extending the main to meet their property, why isn't Palm Beach County suggesting that over putting in a private owned piece of pipe?
Well, one option is to have the county put in a line, but the county actually would not approve any of these things that we wanna do that make them more favorable to the town.
And, and I believe they wanted a twenty foot easement.
They want a twenty foot easement, and they wouldn't listen to any of this other stuff, but not, they wanted to take the trees out, and we're like, I'm not taking the tree out.
They wouldn't extend the main?
They, they would, but they will not...
Why?
They, they will do it, but their easement is more friendly to the county than this, than this would be.
Yes.
We looked at that first.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, but it looks like we covered that. Hey, I'm not king yet, so what can I tell you, Bill?
I, I don't think that we need to do this, and I think the county needs to re-engineer what they're talking about. The tree removal is on their property, not on the, on our property, right?
No, it's our property. The trees in our, those sables that are across the fence line would have... And I think there's a live oak there too, need to be removed. And I said no.
Thanks for sticking up for us.
I love my trees.
Thank you.
All right, Bill. Ashok. You've been away? Did you just get back in town? Where you been?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ashok Kurkani, 8131 West Lake Drive. You know, on this easement, since we have got those screens, ideally, there should be, the drawing should be shown. You have been discussing, and I'm sure nobody has a clue, because this is a physical thing we are talking. The lot, the easement, and at least...
You're right.
Really, if there is a drawing board, that is fine. But since we have these, I prefer...
When you're talking about this, we have the TVs, right?
So, what I'm suggesting is that in this kind of a case, it should be displayed, so everybody will understand, because you are discussing among yourself, and we have no clue.
I, I agree with you. We don't have a drawing either.
Yeah, we, yeah, you do. You do, but...
Where was, did I miss it?
Yes, it's in the easement, but we, we will do a better job on that. Thank you. I agree with you.
Yes, ma'am.
If anybody wants to see what it looks like, here is a copy of it. Here.
Hi.
You're welcome.
Brandon Burke, 1890 Carissa Road. Clem and I actually walk that easement every day. Sometimes he walks it twice a day with our dog, okay? And we cut through that back gate and go through the park. So it's a big concern for us. One of the major concerns is the traffic, which I'm glad that you brought up, because this wasn't involved in the traffic study. And it's a very dangerous area as is, without adding a preschool to it. Another thing is, I've been to the last fifteen meetings, with the exception of last month, and I do remember the presentation on the school. I don't remember it being approved. Might have missed me, but I don't remember when this was voted on or approved. And I have a concern if the other preschools in the area were ever contacted. I happen to live back to a property that backs up to New Life Church that has a school. Mr. Shahou, I believe your church has a Montessori school. I'm wondering, were those pastors, priests consulted? Will this third school have an impact on them? Because, I mean, I'm, I'm not speaking for New Life, but I do know that that school is a big factor in their financial, and I wouldn't want anything to happen to New Life Church, being I back up to it, that they can't maintain their property. So I'm wondering where the other schools in the area contacted to see if a third school was gonna have an impact on their financial stability?
If I may, I think we're confusing apples and oranges. I don't think there's a limitation on the type of use of the, of any of the property in town. So you can have one, you can have two, you can have three Montessori schools. I don't think our code prevents or caps it in particular. But this was an issue that was vetted, I wanna say six, seven, eight months ago.
June of last year.
I was here for the presentation, I just don't remember.
And then it was conditioned upon them, I think, meeting with the property owners and satisfying their request. They had a concern...
Shared parking.
It was an...
Shared parking and license.
Basically say, hey, look, you know, it, we don't have a dog in this fight. You have to resolve your issues with the property owners. And if you, if you resolve your issues with the property owners, God bless you. And if you don't, we have nothing to do with it.
I'm just, I am concerned though about the traffic. I'm also concerned about when you say those trees. I mean, we sit under those trees with our dog, so we don't want those trees moved. But then you've also said the wording that if something, if for some reason they had to be torn up, you would, they would be responsible for replacing it, right?
We're gonna craft the document in such a way as to protect the town as much as we possibly can. If our, if our requirements to protect the town are not accepted by those of you, the property owner that has to sign off on it, so be it. Okay? But I also want to appreciate there has, I think that there should be a Plan B. It seems as though you've got a big property over there that's got water coming to it. You know, fire suppression's gotta be, you know, a fire hydrant somewhere along the line. And I just wanna know, okay, let's say we say no, now what are they gonna do? Has it been developed such a long time ago that the fire suppression issue wasn't a concern back then, but it is now as a result of all of the changes in the code? If that be the case?
Yes.
Then now we have to figure out, okay, we have a problem, let's fix it.
Yes.
And that...
That is the case.
I can understand. I just wanna be sure the trees aren't damaged or are replaced. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, living on Carissa Road, and maybe this is something you can address, the hedge along Flagler Bank was destroyed in Hurricane Irma. And it took me four years of complaining to get the dead hedge out, and they've never been forced to replace that hedge.
Who's "they"?
Flagler Bank. So it's along Carissa Road, there's a cement wall there, and they were supposed to, my understanding was they are supposed to, in the putt or whatever the development plans are, keep a hedge there. They have not had a hedge there in years. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other audience comments?
Clem Brandon Burke, 1890 Carissa Road. The pull of Forest Hill only can take three cars. They're gonna have a hundred and something units coming in at one time. What traffic study are you guys looking at? Because you're gonna have it backing up in Forest Hill Boulevard, because it's on a turn there too. It's a bad idea.
Yes, sir.
That was already addressed.
Yeah.
Zoning Board.
Kevin Klopp, 1600 Carandis. So I live on the corner of Carandis and Lake Clark Drive, and the property you're talking about backs up against my house. And I saw from a distance the map. The easement doesn't concern me as much as the traffic. And the other tenants that are in that, that area, you have, we'll call it a rehab center in there. We're talking about safety for children. I have a lot of people walking through my backyard and cross my house, and I know they don't live in the area, and they're just getting to and from their treatment at all times. Eight, eight o'clock at night, five thirty in the morning, walking around. So it's a safety issue. I take care of my own, I'm not a big complainer. However, I can see both traffic and safety of that site being an issue.
Thank you.
I could give you a lot of not-so-pretty examples of what I've had to deal with. But I'll give you one that's not so bad. If you walk on that property, I walk my dog there, as you know, every day, every morning. If you walk along that easement covered in garbage, rats, I think code enforcement's heard my wife complain about the rats and the garbage. This is behind the rehab center. Abandoned cars, ones finally been removed. That whole area, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take my grandchild there into that building area. And getting out off of Lake Clark Drive and turning right is gonna be a zoo. So then you're gonna have traffic increase on Carandis to get out of the area. So you have to accept that that's gonna change the traffic patterns. Especially it, they all come at the same time in the morning, eight, eight thirty. So just, I know you can't stop this train, but you should consider the ramifications of what you're doing. Okay? My biggest concern, of course, is the rehab center and the traffic that comes in and out of there. Go drive by and look at the bus stop at about seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning. You'll see the people leaving the rehab center. Okay, so, again, great familiarity. I'm not telling you not in my backyard, but I'm telling you, I can see problems. Very clearly. Safety problems.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Charlie?
You... I will...
You feel the direction of...
I will, I will draft the, the document, and submit it to the property owner and to the Montessori, and plan on having it on the agenda in two weeks.
And I encourage every council member to reach out to Mr. Scheck and/or Mr. Labella, and send that, give us that in draft form, so we can all have an opportunity to input.
Do we have a consensus on permit and license versus easement? I mean...
Well, what do you, what do you...
I stated I prefer the permit and license.
I do too.
I do three.
I do four.
Yeah. That's why I suggested, is there any conversation against what Mr. Scheck is proposing?
Well, but he was proposing fixing the easement, but...
He was, because he preferred, that's okay, he preferred, he preferred the licensing and the permitting.
Yeah, both, both can work. And, and obviously, the license has an advantage in that it doesn't give ownership interest in the property to a third party. But either of the two methods, if properly drafted, work.
Well, I think it's the direction of council at this time.
Mr. Shahoum? I'd be remiss if I didn't bring something up. And, you know, I hear what you guys are explaining and talking about, about the traffic and the rehab facility that, that's there. I, I get it, I hear it. And what's frustrating is, and what I've heard from the commentary is, make, so the decision on the water pipe, if we make it more difficult for this Montessori, essentially what I'm hearing from some of the commentary is, if we make it more difficult for them, then they won't come in. The problem with that is that it's our duty, my duty, to make sure that we're not looking at use so much in this particular format. And, and Mr. Scheck, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to look at it as an applicant independent of what's going on of the surrounding. So we have to look at the applicant almost in a vacuum, Mr. Scheck, correct? So that we can accurately and fairly apply the law and make a decision fairly that we would have rendered, whether it was a nursing home, a waiting room, an office, whatever it may be. And this is, to be clear, by and large part, a reaction to an updated code, fire safety code, that these are required components.
It makes the commercial property more usable. It's...
And it is zoned for such.
Yes. And, and the requirement for fire sprinkling is not only for the Montessori school, but it would be for multiple uses that would go into the building.
Almost every use.
Almost every use now, because of the change in the code.
Yes.
So this actually makes the property more marketable, which is a benefit to the town.
Thank you.
You okay? Any other comments?
No. I understand the direction of the council, and we appreciate the support.
Okay, thank you. And I think you have the direction of council?
I will get busy tomorrow.
All right. Any other further business for the town? Anything else for the good of the town?
Motion to adjourn.
Let it be written, let it be done. To move. Got it. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Carlton.